I don't think it's ever a question how long I want to go. Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 22. Washtugle City Council Meeting. Would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Thank you. Rose, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Boger.
Here.
Councilmember Plinsky. Councilmember Greenlee. Councilmember Lindsay.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Thank you. I know we received a message from Councilmember Plinsky that she would be absent this evening. She's not feeling well.
Uh-uh.
Move to excuse Councilmember Plinsky and Greenlee?
Did we hear anything from Paul?
No.
If you would like to amend your motion by your rules, you can only excuse someone if they've contacted either myself or Mrs. Forsberg.
So I'm in.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to exclude, excuse Councilmember Plinsky this evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening? Okay, carrying none. Rose, do we have any correspondents?
No.
Okay. With that, we are at the first opportunity for anyone from the public that would like to address council to do so. Oh, Harvey?
Mayor, City Council Members, residents of Washtugle, all three of you. Approximately two to three years ago, I'm Harvey Olson, 3903 R Street.
Thank you, Harvey.
You're welcome, Mayor. Approximately two to three years ago, I suggested to the mayor and city council that a resolution be passed to acknowledge the Schmidt family for their contributions made to Washtugle. For anyone not familiar with the Schmidt family, they're a trucking company based in Washtugle up on 32nd Street, just about past around M Street, I guess it would be. And at one time, they employed up to 125 people. They also donated property to the city, plus many other contributions that benefited the city. So now, the current council has the opportunity to recognize the Schmidt family by voting to set a public hearing to consider the adoption of the Development Agreement Bill Number 01-13. I say it's high time to approve this bill and go on from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Harvey. Anyone else who would like to address council? Okay, moving into our consent agenda. This evening, we have a consent agenda that is comprised of four items. Our council minutes of January 7th, 2013. Our workshop minutes of January 14th, 2013. Our regular accounts payable claims totaling $350,523.39. And Agenda Bill 1-13, setting a public hearing for a development agreement with the the Schmidt family. Counsel?
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second for approval. Any council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Takes us to our next order of business on the agenda. Agenda Bill 2-13, an ordinance adoption amending Washtugle Municipal Code Sections 3.91.010, 3.92.020, 14.32.030, and 14.32.045, adjusting water and sewer rate increases and qualification thresholds for low-income for senior citizens. And Jennifer, before you start, if you could let the record show Rose that Councilman Greenlee has joined us. Mrs. Forsberg.
Thank you, Mayor. And counsel, look at that, I'm gonna start coughing again. In 2010, council approved a five-year program in the utility rate increases effective through, from 11 through 15, that supported the approved capital facilities plans that were in effect at that time, and implemented best financial practices for the utility systems to ensure financial stability now and into the future. After currently reviewing the capital plans and where the city is at with respect to growth factors versus where the 2010 rate study predicted the city would be, the city is able to move various capital projects out to a later date, which provides the opportunity for rate relief. The city will undertake a cost of service analysis during 2013 to determine the best utility rate structure for the city in the billing of water and sewer and storm. This analysis will review the residential 10-unit base charge to ensure that it's the appropriate base charge for water. In light of the possible rate structure change, the council desires to provide further rate mitigation for residential customers in 2013 by utilizing 500,000 of unrestricted general fund reserves to provide for temporary rate reduction in 2013. In addition, the city has a low-income senior program that allows low-income seniors in our community to apply for discounted sewer and storm water rates. The income levels have not been updated in the recent past, therefore this ordinance links the income levels to the federal extremely low level and very low level rates on the Housing and Urban Development Federal Site that is updated annually based on the median income in the area. The changes presented through this ordinance would be in effect as of January 1st, 2013, and then as dictated in the attached tables. The recommended action is to read the ordinance by title only, pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Jennifer. Counsel?
I move that we read the ordinance by title only. What's the rest of the verbiage? I haven't, I'm not used to this.
That's the first part of it, and then we do that first.
Okay.
The first part is pass, post, and publish.
After you, after you read it, I guess you make that motion.
It's two separate.
I'm not used to that, used to that. I've heard it many times, but I'm just not used to that format.
We actually do it in two separate portions.
Okay.
I've got a motion to read the ordinance by title only. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
An ordinance amending Washtugle Municipal Code 3.91.010, Washtugle Municipal Code 3.92.020, Washtugle Municipal Code 14.32.030, and Washtugle Municipal Code 14.32.045, adjusting water and sewer rates by lowering the previously approved annual rate increases for water and sewer in 2013 through 2015, and adjusting the income qualification requirements for low-income senior rates.
Help me with the second.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. Council discussion?
I apologize, I was late and just, just sorry. What is the source of lowering the rates? Is, are we, is this just changes in the capital plans, or are we, what are we doing?
There's two things that are happening with the ordinance with respect to the rates. The rates themselves are being adjusted to a lesser increase than what was in, that's already in place for this year and out years. And that is exclusively a function of adjustments to the capital facilities plan and the ability for us to defer some of the items in the plan a little bit, and that lets us slow down the increases in these, in these first couple of years. The other piece is the one-time flat rate reduction using $500,000 of general fund reserves. And that comes from the fund that you created during the budget process for 2013, and it's a form of a utility tax credit, if you would.
Mr. Mayor, I move to separate the questions.
Mr. Mayor, clarification, please? Into?
That's was gonna be my next question.
Well, it seems to me that there are two pieces here. One is a rate reduction due to changes in the capital facilities plan. That's one question. And a separate question is whether to reduce the rates by spending $500,000 of capital to reduce the rates. Is that not correct?
Correct, out of the general fund reserves. And I should point out, there is a third component to the ordinance. It's adjusting the thresholds for the low-income senior program to use federal indexing so that we don't have to change, we just ride with the federal indexing. So I think if you were looking to have the question of the, of the use of reserves considered separately, you might split it into two pieces. One would be the capital facilities plan-based rate changes, and the other would, included with that would be the low-income threshold, and then the other piece would be the reserve piece.
That is my intent.
So you want to break it into two pieces, one containing two issues, one containing a third issue?
Correct.
And the third issue is the utility tax cut, returning the tax?
Just the use of the reserves. Is there a second?
I'll second that. And I, I would ask for, because I want to hear the discussion, and also because I don't think it's appropriate to wrap so many things up in one motion. Could you clarify for us, please, Mr. Mayor, the two issues that are combined in the?
The two issues are the reductions that are recommended from the change in our capital plans.
Okay.
And also the adoption of new threshold amounts for seniors.
Okay, so then the separate issue remaining?
Will be your use of $500,000.
For reduction of rates this year only?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to separate the issues between the change of capital plans and adoption of the new lower rates for low-income seniors, and the second item being the use of capital, excuse me, the use of reserves to mitigate rates. Council discussion?
All right, I'll make some comments.
Jennifer?
I see this is important, that we have this all-in-one ordinance, because as we've discussed in past council workshops and meetings, all three of these items are important to roll into the rates at the same time, rather than separating them out and, you know, potentially having them tabled or postponed. And that's my opinion.
Well, I beg to differ. I, I think that the, the use of reserves is a separate question.
Other council discussion?
Well, I tend to believe that it's all one issue, so I think it should all be wrapped in together.
Mayor, I'd like to hear your thoughts on this, because we had a discussion within, over the last week about you wanting to chat with us about some of the fiscal issues the city's facing.
Well, yeah, I've, I think I've had an opportunity to talk with a number of members of council that have asked the question. My, my hesitation is not your use of reserves to mitigate rates. My hesitation is the potential vote tonight prior to the in-depth discussion in financial projections that we're gonna be discussing on Friday and Saturday in regards to the future years of this city. As you all know from the budget process, years 14, 15, and 16 are deeply in the red. Heretofore, this council, many members of this council have voted to not use reserves. In very few instances, we've used reserves, and even those instances were split votes.
Yet these were kind of special reserves that were excess over what we normally needed, because they were gonna be used originally for property acquisition.
Absolutely. Uh, no, I'm talking about the, the use of the reserves to fund your ERNR accounts. I'm talking about the use of the reserves to fund the infrastructure matching grant funds, and the use of reserves to fund a building contingency fund.
The origin of these reserves was a property, you know, that was your, the original proposal, as I understood it in the budget, was to acquire property for parks or parking in the downtown area.
That was my proposal.
And it got relabeled to excess reserves.
Correct.
And we just, at least when I proposed that, I had three potential uses. The mayor's proposal, maybe some other infrastructure, things we could do with it, or rate relief on utilities. And that was what the intent was, when, at least when I suggested that. So this is a kind of a special reserve fund that goes over and above what we had normally been carrying, was my understanding.
Yeah, again, my, my desire is to make sure that in this year's retreat, when you have time to really look at the numbers, look at the amount of dollars that we have in reserve in many different areas, all of which you can pull back for the most part and utilize for other things, that you just make a very informed decision on how you strategically want to use reserves. And again, it's a great conversation to be having. There are not many communities that I know of anywhere that are having discussions about spending savings and how we spend those. So it is an absolute tremendous, and it's a very fortunate discussion to be having. I believe that it is prudent for you to do that with all of the information that you can have, including what updated projections are of deficits of the city in out years and other areas in a full discussion of where you potentially could use those. I'm not asking you not to consider the question, I'm just asking you to postpone considering that question until after you've had those presentations and been able to act. I just don't want, I would feel very remiss if you were to make a decision to utilize a half million dollars of reserves one time and find out a year or two years from now that those dollars that were used to mitigate rates for individuals, we've already got mitigation in here, but to mitigate them farther are gonna be needed somewhere else. I just want to make sure that you make an informed decision. This is a massively different conversation that we're having, just flat using half a million dollars of reserves in one shot. Dave?
I think this is a much better use of a half million dollars in reserve than property purchases, purchases in the downtown area. So I'm not, I'm not deterred by this at all. That's a question of where you want to put your reserves. And I, I point out that I voted against the use of these reserves in almost, on almost every occasion. But I will vote for it on this, on this occasion reluctantly, because the money goes back to the taxpayer, as opposed to going to some project which produces ribbon-cutting ceremonies and, and shovel turning ceremonies. So I, I'm not deterred by this prospect at all. I look forward to hearing about the structural deficit. I've been concerned about that for the last three years. And at times, I felt like I was standing alone against the tide. So I'll, I'll be anxious to hear what you've got to say, but I don't see that as a deterrent to this vote tonight.
And, and please understand my stance. I don't care where you use the reserves, whether it's properties, whether it's rate relief, whatever it is. I just want to make sure that after the presentations on Friday and Saturday, you're even prepared to use reserves, period, for any use.
I've thought about this water rate situation at length, and I also am prepared to use the reserves to go back to the taxpayer, to approach our utilities over a period of time in perhaps a more equitable way to still meet our responsibilities as a city, and to still be aware of the imposition this is putting our citizens into. So I see no reason to separate the question.
Could you?
Yeah, I just want to echo my fellow councilmembers. We have heard from our citizens, and I've never seen an outrage like this before. I mean, I haven't been that active until this year and the year before, but we've heard from them, and this is a matter of, I mean, it sounds like it's a matter of starvation or water, you know, they're having to choose. And we certainly don't want people to be in such straits. So I'm hearing from my community, and that's what I'm basing that on. Think we, we have 11 months to continue to scratch, I mean, just wrestle through our budget for 2014. And that's something that we have to do diligently to provide for the, whatever we need to do for next year. So again, I, I look for, as all of you have said, I look forward to Saturday and hearing what's going on. It's interesting to hear tonight, because we were asked to set that money aside for specific things. We feel like this is a good, you know, for, like you said, Dave, for property acquisition. Between the two, this is a refund to the people, which they're desperate for. We're still in a recession here in Clark County, and everyone's hurting. I know my family is going backwards still financially, so it's, it's something that I'm not even on a fixed income, but can't imagine how hard that would be. So, thank you.
Paul?
Couple of things. One of the problems is that the concept, or the meaning of the word "reserves" is very We don't use the term at all the same way that they do in Vancouver. Savings may actually be a better generic term. The way that Vancouver uses the, the word "reserves," pretty much, little bit of variation, is what we call our operating reserve, which by policy, we have set at 16% of general But within our budget, especially from 2007 through 2013, the meaning of the word has changed quite a bit, so that, on the one hand, the strictest meaning of reserves is that operating reserve. In the 2007 budget, which of course was actually passed under the Jeff Guard administration, they had ending fund balances which amounted to roughly 40% of general fund. If you add together our ending fund balances, plus our sinking funds, which we're calling reserves, and equipment repair and replacement reserve, it's not really a reserve, it's a sinking fund. So if you add up all of the kind of savings accounts, whether they're equipment repair and replacement reserves, or ending fund balances, or technical reserves, what you end up with is about the same percentage of general fund in savings. So the idea that this is a windfall that has happened suddenly over the past year or two simply isn't true. The fact that we relabeled it excess reserves is in fact a bit of a lie. There is no such things as excess reserves. They're all, they're all monies which are to be spent on the operation or the future of the city. And I think only myself and Jennifer were party to the discussions with Paul Lewis, where we looked at, because we were both on finance committee at that point, where we looked at the projections of revenue and expenditures for the city. And frankly, the last time we looked at this, the city falls into a black hole in 2015. The discussions that I've had with Councilmember Shoemaker have, have always been along the lines that the reason that we have reserves, or that we built up these reserves in 2007, 8, and 9, which is really when a lot of this happened, is because we knew at the time that we were on a bubble, and that revenues were rolling in, and the times were good, but they wouldn't be good forever. There would be something that would happen, whether, I don't think anybody expected the bubble would burst as hard as it did. But we knew that we wanted reserves or savings to level out the decreases in revenue with our expenditures, because this city is already belt-tight lean, has been since long before I was ever on council. We actually have fewer staff today than we had in '09, not by much, but we've, we've had essentially 80 people on staff, plus or minus one, or two, or three, since 2007. That hasn't changed. But if we go into the kind of revenue and expenditure projections that we're looking at in '05 and '06, we're gonna be, we're not gonna be repairing streets. We won't, we will, and we may seriously have to cut staff. And where those staff cuts come, I don't know. I'd like to think they wouldn't come out of police, but we know they can't come out of the licensed utilities, water, sewer, they're running on bare bones. You have to have a licensed operator on duty 24/7. Without that licensed operator, you can't run your plant. It's illegal. So I would hope that we would just wait until we have our discussions on Saturday about the use of reserves. If we want to do this, we can easily make the next workshop a special meeting at which we can take action, and go ahead and take the vote on the use of this half a million dollars. But if we spend it now, I'm, I'm very worried that, that we're being kind of overly reactive. When I was, even before I was first on council, we had a plan, we were gonna put a sewer line across the river at M Street, and, and use it as a base for a pedestrian bridge. There were 10 or a dozen people who were hot, I mean, hot, 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 in opposition to that, most of them in the neighborhood that I now live in. And council gave in to the voice of the people. The fascinating thing was, several years later, when the project absolutely actually started, and we were tearing up streets, going to tear up streets, I went around and knocked on all of the doors in the neighborhood and opened the conversation with, "Hi, I'm from the city, and we're gonna make a, a mess out of your front yard." And began the discussion that way with how we were gonna tear up the street, and why, and what we needed to do. Four to one, people would have said, "Oh, does that mean the pedestrian bridge is gonna No, we're gonna go under the river." "Oh, that's too bad, because that way, my boy could walk home from high school." That would make high school within walking distance of much of the north side of the river, that simple bridge. So I promised myself that I would never again confuse loud with numbers.
Thank you.
I don't take this casually. I understand reserves, I understand budgets, and I understand being broke. Water is not an option, and we have people in our community that are obviously hurting under what I consider an unfair structure. We do have time to- We do have time to explore this, as Councilman Freeman said. We have been asked by our community to address this issue. And I think that's our, I feel it's my responsibility to do that. So, I do not object to spending this money to go back to the people who really put it in there in the first place, and help them at this time, because the city may be having problems, but we have citizens that are having problems also. And I believe government is accountable to the people who put us here.
You're here. Absolutely. Well said.
Dave?
I, I share Mr. Greenlee's concerns. Often enough, I've sat here and talked about preserving the reserve. And Paul and I have, have come to an agreement that that's probably a good idea. On this one, I, I differ with him. I beg your pardon, Paul. The other thing is, Joyce, you mentioned why you wanted this to go back to the people. I, I agree with that. I, I'm less concerned about it than I am some of the other issues that are raised here. The issue that this brings forward for me is the restructuring of the rates, which I understand we're gonna tackle later in the year.
You should have that before the mid-part of the year.
Fantastic. Because I think that's the other piece of this puzzle. Right now, we've got low-water users subsidizing high-water users, and I don't think that's appropriate. I, I think you should have a basic connection charge to defray the basic expense of, of being connected to the system. And then, after that, you pay for what you get. And that, that provides an incentive to conserve, and it, it provides a reward to those who do. And a lot of those folks came here and said, "If I'm only using half a unit, why am I paying for 10?" And that resonates with me as, as a fairness issue.
It's fair. I think so, too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other council discussion? Can you jump?
Couple of weeks ago, I, I had asked, that at our retreat, we have that discussion, because you, let me back up. You had described how that, when we use the term "reserve," things have changed, and how we sort, sort of say pigeonhole those reserves. It used to go in a big pot, it sounds like, and now they're sort of being...
Some of them.
Okay. So I hope, uh...
You still have a big pot.
I'm just hoping that we still have that slated for our retreat this weekend, that we can have a discussion in more detail on where those extra other pots are in reserves. I don't know if you recall me asking for that?
I think that's what we've been talking about for the last 20 minutes, is
Well, I mean...
you're holding off on this discussion until after you have that discussion.
Well, maybe you just didn't, maybe I didn't catch that you specified specifically, it was about reserve pots. Okay. Just wanted to ask to make sure we, we do that. Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to separate the issues. All those in favor?
Aye.
No. Sorry.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Motion does not carry. Now, we still have a main motion of passing, posting, and publishing the ordinance in the usual manner. Any additional council discussion?
I, I just would plead again that we have our discussion on the use of reserves before we do this. We can easily postpone this a week at essentially no cost, and we get to have the discussion about the use of reserves.
Well, you'll have the discussion about use of reserves no matter what.
Well, I know, but it'll be too late.
That's coming to you. Okay, any other council discussion?
I've said a lot about this already, and I really don't have anything to add, other than, as someone who's been involved in municipal finance law for 10 years now, I have some disagreement with Councilmember Greenlee's statements about that. And I'm not gonna go into details about it, but I also take exception to him calling the excess reserve fund a bit of a lie. I believe he voted for that motion himself.
Any other council discussion? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to the second opportunity for anyone from the public that would like to address council. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Speaking to the subject of...
If I could get your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Don Whitner, Post Office Box 170, Waschuggah. Speaking to the subject of utility tax rates, general fund reserves, and fiscal policy, which has been, fiscal policy has, it appears to me, underlie a lot of the comments that were made by all the council members who spoke to this subject this evening. Thanks to Jennifer Forsberg, a quick response to my questions from last Friday. She got back to me today. I've done some arithmetic. If I heard her correctly, and if I did my arithmetic correctly, in the past five years, 2008 through 2012, the city's utilities have contributed $2,650,000 to the general fund. During all of that time, many of us who were in the audience at the last council meeting, many of us in the general public, were unaware of the rates of taxes that the general fund was taking out of the utilities. It's a matter of municipal code. It started in 1954, I understand. It's established in law, but utility ratepayers, generally speaking, didn't know it. I didn't know it. Most of your utility users today still don't know it. I think what's going to come back, and these are just general comments, because most of us, just learning about the heavy, heavy tax burden from the general fund on utilities, haven't even had a chance to look at where it goes in the general fund. You folks know, your staff knows, we don't. I think there is going to be continual public reaction as it becomes more and more apparent through the utility bills what's happening. So speaking very quickly, and I'll, I'll wrap this up as quickly as I can. Fiscal policy, municipal fiscal policy. Reserves traditionally, and for very good reason, have been reserved, kept, saved for unanticipated expenses and emergencies. To take $500,000 out of general fund reserves to, to contribute back to the utility ratepayers, frankly, I think is going to be seen as insulting, insulting their intelligence. If I recall correctly, and I only have a vague recollection, the staff's explanation showing the rate reduction for this $500,000 was not really impressive, and I think a whole lot of ratepayers are gonna be terribly, terribly unimpressed. I would encourage the city council to keep all of its reserves for unanticipated expenses and emergencies, and not appear, and I, I underline the word "appear," to be appeasing angry utility ratepayers. You're gonna look, I think you're going to look a little silly, just one person's reaction. It looks like you're rushing to appease a lot of angry people, and it's not gonna hold them off. As this comes home to roost, and these horrible, horrible utility bills continue to mount, you're gonna continue to have this ghost coming back, this elephant in the room, really, coming back and filling up the room. It's, it's gonna make for a lot of uncomfortable council meetings. My suggestion, do not appear to be appeasing, or rushing, or recklessly using reserves to appease your utility ratepayers, and instead, put those tax rates on your utility bills, face the music, and begin explaining why, why, why does the general fund need so much money from the utility ratepayers? There's probably good answers. None of us have, you know, in the audience and in the general public, have taken the time or had the opportunity to be as knowledgeable as you folks. I think it's about time the city council began educating us on why the general fund needs this much money. Thank you for your attention and time, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Don. Anyone else from the public that would like to address council? Good evening, Janice.
Janice Ellis, Post Office Box 450, Waschuggah. I understand what he has just stated about not appeasing the citizens. However, unless I misunderstand, this $500,000 is gonna be spent anyway on property, or something with the city? Things that the people will go, "What are they doing? They keep spending money, and we keep hurting." And I understand what Mr. Greenlee is saying. I agree with him. But this $500,000 is gonna go somewhere. Somebody's gonna spend it, and it's not gonna be to the people. It's gonna be for property, or, or whatever. And I don't think the people are gonna be too happy about that. My question is, the assessment that you did regarding this independent assessment, where you spent $400,000 to have analysis made? If that had continued on, you would probably would have spent over $600,000 beyond for more assessment. Is that correct?
Janice, if you could, you need to direct your questions to me.
Okay.
We, we haven't spent $400,000 on anything.
I'm, I'm sorry, $40,000. I'm sorry. I wrote it wrong. But if you had continued that, there would be additional money spent. And where is that money going? Why isn't that in the reserves? You take the 500 out, give it to the people. Where is that money going? We don't know. I don't know. Maybe that's one of the pots of separate accounts you have, but when the people hear that there's money that would have been spent, that's not being spent now for that, they're gonna wanna know where that money's going.
It's actually not going anywhere. It's staying into the reserves and the utility funds.
Okay, so that would be...
To help offset the capital projects.
Why can't that replace the 500? I mean, you know what I'm saying? We got money in two different pots, from what I can see.
Well, we got money in a lot of different pots.
And we don't understand what those pots are.
Yeah. And it, to answer the question you're at right now, it, it's kinda one of those six and one half dozens and the other. We could utilize money out of the reserves to, out of the utility reserves to give back to the ratepayers. But quite frankly, what we're gonna use the funds for are additional capital facilities upgrades that we'd have to go out and borrow against.
And what would that be, though? I mean, what would you have to borrow for? I mean, we don't understand. If the money doesn't come back to us, and it's, it's a short-term solution, and it doesn't appease the amount of money saved, but it would look like you're trying to do something. But if you spend it on other things like property, or, or buildings, or concrete, or whatever, we don't know. That would not make people happy. People have made comments to me about that corner down there, or that fountain, or whatever it is. I don't even go there, but they're sending, "We spent that much money on that, and for what? What does that do for Waschuggah?" Everybody has their own opinion. Mr. Greenlee, you mentioned that you never again would listen to the voice, the volume of the people versus the need or your belief in what should be done.
Janice, again, you need to
Oh, okay, everybody.
direct your questions in my direction.
Okay.
Sorry about that, we have rules.
That's okay. I, I just don't know the rules. That's one example, but there's other examples out there, too, that we have to be balancing to make it even. That was one experience. There's probably a lot of other experiences that would counterbalance that. Guess that's all I have right now. And I guess, and I won't bring this up into any detail, but I have been told by several people that there was a lot of money missing several years ago, or a few years ago, from the city that was never investigated, which I believe it was. But if you start, start talking about low reserves and money, if that's brought up, I hope you're prepared for an answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice.
Angard, 4813 K Street. It's cold in here. Um, I...
It's because the furnace went out today.
I heard that. Oof. Anyway, am I not correct, Mr. Mayor, that when the proposal was put together for this $500,000, the council made it very clear they would decide if and when that money would be used, and what it could be used on? And so, if for some reason, your budget numbers and everything down the road aren't coming in, they had the choice not to spend that money this year, correct? And it could have gone back where it was going? Okay. The one thing I want you guys to remember, there are people with families in this town. And you're gonna look at changing the meters and the units of water. And you're gonna look at trying to help a segment of the people of Waschuggah. There might have been 100 people so far that we've heard from on the utility bills. I know all utilities have taxes. But the thing that I do know is, if there's a neighbor next to me, and they have four people living in their house, yes, they're gonna use more water than I do. But they probably don't have the same amount of disposable money I might have either. So in the realm of everything, life balances out. And I hope you consider not just a group of people, but all people of Waschuggah.
Thank you. Good evening.
Never done this before, so I don't wanna mess it up.
That's okay. If we could get your name and address.
Lisa Benel. I live on 1010 12th Street in Waschuggah. I'm bad, because I haven't been down here before, and I didn't know all the water rates and all this stuff was going up. But when I moved here in 2008, my water bill was $88. I'm a single parent, and you guys talk about the economy and all of that. I haven't had a raise in six years. I have family to raise. And every time something goes up, it's less money out of my pocket. Tonight, she's talking about, Joyce was saying how it was cold in here when she came in. I'm making a choice right now of either having the heat on, or letting my granddaughter take a bath. And they're not living with me because I want them to, but they can't afford to go out and live on their own in Waschuggah either, because they can't afford the water rates. My son moved out, and he moved back in. I don't know, you know, what your, what the budgets are. Like I said, I'm bad. I haven't been down here, but I'm gonna start. But I know my budget hasn't increased. I don't have disposable money. She's talking about, you know, some people have four people in their house, and they can't afford it, but other people only have two, but they have disposable money, so you guys have to be careful of when you adjust how much you're charging for water. This summer, my granddaughters, my grandchildren were gone at their other grandparents' house. It was just me, but I'm still paying $174. And when I'm only using seven units, sometimes five units, but I'm being charged for 10, to me, that's stealing. You're taking money out of my pocket that I don't have in the first place, and seriously, I contacted... And seriously, I contacted my real estate agent. I'm moving out of Waschuggle because I can't afford to live here anymore. And I live in a tiny, itty-bitty house. You know, I have to move into an apartment because I can't afford this. And I have people that I work with that were down here last week, and they said, it's like talking to a wall. They're not getting anywhere. And I don't know how much $500,000 would contribute, you know, in a short term against a water bill. But I'm still trying to figure out why I'm paying $174 every two months for water that I'm not using. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Harvey Olson, 3903 R Street. I moved into Waschuggle 13 years ago, approximately, give or take three or four months. And the water usage, you paid for how many gallons you used every month? Not a unit, but it was the number of gallons. I don't know when we went to the units, 750 gallons per unit, and now we're charged for 10 units a month if we only use three. I would second Councilman Shoemaker's suggestion that we go back to what we use instead of what might we use, or what the city thinks we should use, or whatever the thoughts behind the unit. The only thing I can think of is, they went to the unit, the council, I guess, would have had to okay this, and all it did was increase the revenue to the city, for the most part. I see you shake your head, but this is my thoughts. That's the only reason, to get the money for the needed repairs or the upgradings of the sewer system. I would sure like to see us go back to the, what you use is what you pay for. That way, the lower usage people would not be subsidizing the high-use people that get a very good rate. And my better half at home seconds this suggestion, and then some, because she writes the check to pay the bill. And she's really, really upset at the high cost, and we certainly don't use that much water. Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. It's your first time here, we're going to let you make up some other times.
Yeah. Hi, it's Lisa Benel again. What is stormwater runoff? Because I know I have no storm drains where I live. So what is that? And why am I being charged for it if I don't have it?
Your stormwater fee, well, actually, you do have runoff. It's probably into your front yard.
Yeah, it goes right down into the Waschuggle River.
Yeah. In many of our neighborhoods, other than the newer neighborhoods, we don't have storm drains, per se. We don't have curb, gutter, sidewalks. Unfortunately, the federal government sought to put into effect stormwater rules that were handed down to the states. The states turned around and handed them down to us three years ago, four years ago. They came effective. In many cases, unfortunately, my belief is that we have many residents of the city who have the benefit of paying that charge, but personally, don't see a whole lot of benefit to it. The dollars themselves go into the city's treatment of the waters that we do collect before they're turned back into the, into the natural waters.
So it's mandated, even if you don't have it, you have to do it?
Yeah. And in some cases, we do have some, even, even in those areas where we don't have storm drains, swales, that type of stuff, we do still have city street sweepers that go through and they continually street, or sweep the streets no matter what, which still takes some of that gunk off that otherwise would end up into gutters and into, going into the Waschuggle River and that type of stuff. So even those costs in there help clean that before it gets there.
Okay.
Theoretically. Good question. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address council? Okay, going to Mayor's report, I have just a couple of items to remind you of. The first one is our city planning sessions this Friday and Saturday. Friday scheduled from 5:30 to 7:30 in the community center, right behind City Hall. Public is certainly welcome. And then Saturday, starting at 9:00 AM and hopefully wrapping up before 4:00 PM in the afternoon. We have, for those council members that are interested, Camus' welcome of their new city administrator does go until 8:00 in the, in the library area. So we're hoping to finish even a little bit before the 7:30, but if not, they know that we'll be coming late. And they have said that Nina will certainly stick around to meet anyone that is there. So that's your first update. Second update is on the AWC Legislative Conference. For any members that are wishing to attend that, just make sure and let Rose know so that we can get those arrangements made before the, the price of everything goes up. Any items from council? Attorney Joe?
Thank you. As the C-Trans representative for Camus in Waschuggle, I want to make sure that our citizens are aware that this coming Thursday at 5:30 in the evening, there's going to be an open house concerning Route 41. There's a proposal that they're going to be cutting the route visits to Waschuggle. So I will be there gathering information. I already have pages of questions and answers that I have, so I welcome any questions that you may have and invite you to join me there. CEO and, what's Scott Patterson's? I can't think of what his title is. What is it?
Isn't he public information officer?
Yeah, something like that. So the head honchos are all going to be there to answer our questions as to why they need to cut back. It has, of course, to do with ridership. Ridership is way down and it's...
Route 41? It's your Waschuggle route here?
It comes through Waschuggle. It's an express. It's only Monday through Friday, mornings and evenings at peak times. It comes from Waschuggle and goes all the way to downtown Vancouver and over to Delta Park. What will happen is they're going to eliminate 41 coming into Waschuggle. What we'll have to do here is hop on the 92, which is a daily route. Hop on the 92, catch the 41 at Fisher's Landing, and proceed to Delta Park or downtown Vancouver. So I, it's not an unreasonable, in my opinion, of what I see so far, it's not unreasonable seeing that our ridership is so very, very low. So if you want to talk to me afterwards about numbers, I have it here on me.
Attorney Joe, where is the meeting on Thursday?
Fisher's Landing Transit Center, which is on 164th, just north of Highway 14. 5:30.
Thank you. Any other, Brent?
I have some questions about our retreat, and I want to make, I wonder whether some of these things are going to be discussed there. Being new to the council, I haven't been privy to, I wasn't involved in the comprehensive plan updates that we've had. And I would like to have some discussion about our current status of our comprehensive plan, where we're going with it. And, you know, my understanding is some of the decisions we've made in that plan are driving some of these utility rates. And that's, I'd like to kind of take a look at that issue as well. So is that going to be part of our retreat that you plan on?
We don't have it in there, and we've pretty much booked the thing solid. We can take a look at the agenda again and see if we can play with it. If not, Mitch, can you make sure that we get that onto a near-future workshop meeting?
The other thing that I would like to ponder a little bit, and maybe this is something that we can discuss in the retreat, is part of the budget analysis, is one of the things I did learn from my attendance at the AWC conference in Leavenworth last summer is that the most important role that council members have in a, in a strong mayor system is budgetary authority. And I would wonder if there is some interest in the council of forming a council budget committee to kind of interact with the administration in the formulation of the budget proposal. Thoughts on that?
Thumbs up.
Given the level of interest, I think it's a workshop, probably.
That's fine. But I think that's, you know, we have, what, nine months, 10 months before another budget's rolled out, so we have time to get the committee together and have a meaningful discussion about that.
So...
Could you flesh that out a little bit more?
There you go.
Well, state law calls out that in a strong mayor, the administration forwards a budget proposal to you.
Right.
For your all-consideration changes, do whatever to it.
Well, a budget, I think it's rather than have the council present with that in October, that as things get developed, because I know how in a bureaucracy, things develop their own momentum, that we might have, you know, it's an advisory thing. It's, the mayor would obviously still have his, you know, be able to make his decision, but at least there'd be some council members in the loop developing those proposals to see. So we don't have, seems to me it'd be a more orderly method. We can discuss it more, but that's just an idea I have.
We've certainly, we've got four, four and a half, five hours set aside for budget discussions of different types over the, over the two days, so.
I will say that, you know, one of the things I remember from my days at Berkeley was classing British politics and were always reluctant, the government was always reluctant to have parliamentary committees because they, they actually kind of, was perceived they were interfering in the prerogative of the administration. So I don't need to do that, but just to see what we could do with that possibly.
I've always said this collaboration with council works better when it's just me.
Okay. Well, as Mark Twain said, the ideal committee has three members, with two members absentee.
There you go.
Paul?
Sir? Couple of things. What I said was, I wouldn't ever confuse loud with numbers. I meant numbers of people, not dollars. And it's very easy because people generally don't say anything unless they're angry. So it's, the only people that kept counted are the ones who are angry. And that's not fair to the ones who aren't angry. The other thing I would say is, over the past week, I've spent at least 40 hours going over budget material, 2007 through 2013. If anyone wants to go over budget and what all of this means, please call me. I will sit down with you and go through in great, in as much detail as you want, what these budgets are and what they mean, and all of those kinds of things. And hopefully, Don will put that in the paper that I'm willing to do that. Thank you, Don. The other thing to say is, just a couple of misapprehensions. The total of water rates plus stormwater rates is about 40% of your bill. Sewer rates is what's driving this, not water. And so, and then the other thing to understand is that when you talk about water usage, the actual cost of an additional gallon of water is close to nil. The real cost in the water system is to deliver that first gallon to the house. And so when you start talking about, well, I'm being charged too much because I'm only using seven units of water instead of 10, the actual difference in the cost of the system is fairly small, a few dollars. The real cost is the first gallon. And I know that's kind of not been part of the discussion, and it will be part of the discussion in what we call the cost of service study. The cost of service study looks at what it will cost individual subscribers, how the bill is structured, what we call, and I know it sounds backwards, but what we call the rate study actually looks at the total cost of the system and how much the total revenue has to be to pay for that system. So it looks at what the total rate revenue must be in order to have balance in the system. When you ask what, what reserves within the utility would be spent on, and you say, well, what would it be spent on? Concrete? Yes. One of the two biggest, well, the biggest things that we have on our plate for utility capital costs is there's $14 million, more or less, that goes into wastewater treatment plant improvements, a third clarifier, I think another oxidation ditch. And those are frankly all made out of concrete, but they're also expensive. And then there's about $4 million total in water system improvements, reservoirs, tanks. Some of those are concrete, some of them are steel. But that's, that's largely what's driving these rates, is, is the need to make those capital improvements, which frankly, we have been fending off the state of Washington and saying, well, let's kick the can down the road now for longer than I've been on council. And finally, we're at a point where Department of Ecology and Department of Health and the other state agencies are saying, we really mean it. You really have to do this. We're, we can nibble around the edges and push some of those projects into next year or the year after, or the year after, but ultimately, they're going to have to be done. And so, just understand, that's, that's what's driving these rates. It's not that we're hiring lots of people. We actually have fewer people in both water and sewer than we had in '07. So it's, it's not, it's not what it would appear to be if, if, you know, if you're reading the Portland papers about the water fund paying for Rose Festival Queen headquarters. We don't do that here. And so I renew my offer, anybody who wants to go through these budgets, give me a call, and we can sit down and go through in as much detail as you can stand. I admit I'm a bit of a wonk, so you're going to have to tell me, well, that's too much detail. But that's it.
Thank you. Attorney Joe?
What is the definition of a wonk? Is that, is that a dictionary word?
It is a dictionary word.
Is your face next to that word in the dictionary? Is that what you just told us?
No. In my vocabulary, nerds are physics people, and wonks are policy people.
Oh, okay. Do have a real question, though, or statement. I do like the idea that Brent brought up about the budget committee. I'm new to budgets, and I would love to have, like you said, an advisory way early on before we get to December, October, November, I should say. I mean, just think it would be really excellent to have good discussions far in advance of those things that are already presented to us. So just a thumbs up. We all, we all give you a thumbs up. It's good.
Dave?
I support the idea of a budget committee, too. I think it's a good thing to work together. The public safety, the council's public safety committee met today at noon over at the police station with the fire chief, the police chief, and councilmen, council members, Freeman and Bogar and I. And we looked at three topics over there. One date was, one was an update on traffic on 34th Street, and I won't bore you with the details of that. We have some enforcement issues up there that we'll be dealing with. The other two subjects were fireworks, and I know everybody's interested in that. Proposal came forward to sell them from the 2nd to the 4th of July and fire them off on the 4th of July. And for New Year's, to sell them between the 29th and the 31st of December, and use them on the 31st of December until 1:00 in the morning on the 1st of January. That proposal gained unanimous committee support, and it will come... That proposal gained unanimous committee support and it will come forward to the council. The, the other thing we looked at was the Emergency Management Plan. And we found out that emergency management planning is alive and well in the city, which is... I'll, I'll be kind and say somewhat surprising. Frank, frankly, I'm astounded because there are awful lot of cities who aren't doing anything in that area and we're way ahead of them. And our deputy fire chief, Ron Schumacher, no relation, is in charge of that and doing a great job. On the 19th of February at our next public safety meeting, we're going to, the members and the chief are going to go up to Station 42, which is the emergency operations facility that we would be using in the, in the case of an emergency.
In Camus.
In Camus, right. 4321 Northwest Parker Street. And we're going to take a look at the facility and its adequacy for communications and all kinds of, of issues up there. I, I noticed there were concerns tonight about stormwater issues. And my Housing Area Association has been dealing with that since 2005, when I became the inaugural president for that association. And the biggest thing we've been trying to find out from the state is, what do you want us to do? And we haven't, haven't really got a solid answer yet. But they're pressing on, pressing deadlines on us nonetheless. Liz Pike is our 18th District State Representative, is working to put a couple of bills together which would give us some relief from some of the pressure that we're getting from Department of the Ecology, Department of Ecology. My colleague, Mr. Greenlee, mentioned tonight the cost of delivering that first gallon of water. And I agree, that's the most expensive part, Paul. And I think therefore that that should be dealt with by a connection charge, paid by everybody. That would then allow the city to charge for the water that you get, gallon for gallon or unit by unit, however you want to do it. So you get what you pay for. And we don't have low-rate users or low use, low-usage users subsidizing high-usage users. On the action tonight to lower rates by using the reserves, which amounts to returning taxes to the ratepayers, I see that as compensation in part for the lack of action by previous councils that resulted in our current situation. It's not offered to appease the hundred-plus people who came in on the 17th of December and were kind enough to give us their concerns. We're dealing with those concerns, but it's not offered to appease them. As Mr. Greenlee points out, there are sometimes very small groups and very loud groups which get catered to, to the detriment of the general population of the city. I also want to make sure that everybody understands that the part of the rate reduction that we voted for tonight that's funded by reserves is a one-year deal. We'll have to reconsider whether or not we can do that again next year. And given the state of the, the city's finances and reserves, I don't think we'll be, it'll be possible to do that. But we'll take a look at it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, sorry to take up so much time.
May, may, may we confer something you wanted to announce about the entire council joining us at the emergency?
Thank you. We would invite the council, the Public Safety Committee would invite the council to join us on the tour of forty, the station at 42nd, or Station 42. And would you let us know, because if we're going to do that as a group, we'll have to announce a special meeting, Mr. Mayor. We would ask you to help us with that.
What day was that again?
The 19th of February, which is a Tuesday.
At noon.
We normally meet on the third Monday of the month, but since that's the president's holiday, president weekend, president's holiday weekend, we decided to do it on the, on that Tuesday. It's hard to get a scare up a quorum, by the way.
Could I, could I address that, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
We had a, in my other, in my other life, working for another city, we had a situation where we had a majority of a city board go to Vancouver, B.C. to look at some of their development plans. And so we had, actually had to announce a special meeting of that board in Vancouver, B.C. So it is possible to do this, I don't know if it's wise. I mean, the problem I see with it is if we, if we had a majority of the council there and they said anything at all related to what they're seeing, they're discussing a public issue with a majority present, so it's a meeting. So I, the only way I could see not announcing a special meeting is to put tapes over every council member's mouth. So I just don't think that's plausible, that was my thinking on that when we discussed that today.
I vote for the tape.
Good luck with that.
Just so long as I can take it off every night.
I'm a school bus driver and I tell those students to be quiet. I make them be silent if they don't know how to behave. They do sign language. We can still talk, can't we, Joyce?
Jennifer, if we can make sure and touch base with Chief Schumacher and make sure that we get that publicized correctly.
What time was that?
Noon.
Noon, okay. And we have our regular council meeting that evening.
We've already got enough interest that we will need to announce that as a special meeting.
And the meetings normally run just one hour, from 12 to 1.
Dawn, do we even need to, obviously, we need to notice it, do we need to notice it as a special meeting or a tour?
I think we just need to notice that the...
Majority of the council may be on a tour at the station to look through what...
Because I don't think there's anything that's, no action will be taken or there's no proposed action that the city council would be doing. I think it's just advertising...
It's for information only.
Any other items from council? I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
One, one last item.
Yes.
I'd like to thank the staff because they've struggled with us to get through this rate reduction issue and we've gone back and forth on different proposals and every time, the staff had to sit down and pencil it out. I know that's a lot of work, I've been on your side of the, the table on that one and I thank you for all the work that you've done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just want to say one thing, I was in the council, City Hall this morning and there was no heat. And so I was just amazed at the staff, they were working with hats and gloves and coats. It was cold in this building, they're to be commended for even staying. To build a fire.
Mr. Mayor, I move for adjournment.
Thank you.
Second.
Is there a second? Got a motion and a second for adjournment, all those in fair?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.